Okay, it's a little bit after seven, but we're gonna call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, August 17th. Roll call, please, Kim.
Paul Marchese.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Lou Paganello. Don Partridge.
Here.
Jeremy Lyles. Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly.
Here.
You're all set, Kathy?
Okay, Brooks will be voting tonight in place of Lou Paganello. Did everyone have a chance to read their minutes? I don't know if you brought them with you or not. Did you have a chance to review them?
Yep, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Paul McCullough. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul Marchese. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Now, is there anyone that wants to speak on an agenda item tonight before we get started? This is something new we're doing. We're allowing the public to speak if they have some thoughts on the agenda items. This is your time if you want to. No one? Okay, thank you very much. First thing on our agenda is an application by Rita Zambito requesting a ground sign for her real estate office. This is a site plan review and sign approval. It's located in a commercial district. Dan Lang, would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, I can give you a little background here. Rita Zambito is looking at doing an office over there next to the parcel where the Lewis Insurance Company is right now. Looking to get a ground sign in approximately thirty-six feet off of the edge of the road, so it's out of the right-of-way. They have begun remodeling over there and getting that ready to open up. The county did review this as well, and they had proposed action, shall pose no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact, so they recommended approval. We've done our review on it, and we recommend approval as well. It does meet all of the existing town code.
Okay, is Rita here? Yes. Do you wanna say something about it?
No, unless you have any questions.
That was sufficient.
That is it, covered it.
Okay. Did everyone look at the sign? You got it early. Does anybody have any questions?
Just recommendation that you do a type-two Seeker before you make a decision on the signage, that's all. Type-two Seeker.
Okay, this is a type-two Seeker that we... So we do not have to go any further with it. It's just for the minutes. Okay, anybody have any questions? Yes.
Will it be covering or hiding anything important from cars driving by?
No, it's up there far enough, far enough, so it's gonna be able... I'm hoping, and I guess I'm gonna have to ask, and eventually what I'd like to do is widen the driveway to make it easier to get in and out of that spot, so people can, you know, get in and out a lot easier than trying to back out so busy right there.
Do you have enough room for parking for more than...
I'm gonna have to widen the driveway out.
Yeah. Dan, you've checked, you've checked that?
Yes, yes, we've looked at that. There's room too wide in the driveway, being that it's so far off of the roadway, it will have no impact whatsoever in incoming or outgoing traffic whatsoever.
Okay, so what we're doing tonight is approving the sign if you want to approve it, and where it's placed.
Uh-huh.
And who says that? Don Partridge?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul Marchese. Any questions, any comments from the audience? Roll call, please, Kim.
Don Partridge.
Yes.
Paul Marchese.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Well, it looks like you've been approved, so go ahead, and thank you for coming into the town.
Thanks.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a presentation on Hickory Bridge Estates. I'm sure you've all looked at it, you've seen it in Batavia, and you've talked about it. People are talking about it. Well, now we're gonna hear about it. Now, Lazarus Engineers are gonna make a presentation? Who...
It's Frank.
Are you gonna do it?
Frank Lazarus? Yeah, so Lazarus Industries is the contractor, and Shenny is hostess as the engineer. We are both here.
Okay, can we get your names for the minutes, please?
Sure, Frank Lazarus.
Follow the sound.
John Shenny.
Can you spell the last name, John? Thank you.
Now, who would like to make the presentations tonight?
Um, I can start it, I guess.
Okay. Do you have any pictures or anything? I know you passed these around to a group of people.
Yeah, is there enough for everybody?
Does everybody get one? Okay.
We kinda got something similar to everybody else that don't have one.
That's nice, doesn't it?
Our proposal is we're gonna put up forty duplex ranch-style homes, eighty, it would be eighty units. We're looking for a cluster variance, and it's... Dan, can you help me with that?
With what part of it, Dave?
With the variance.
The special use permit?
Special use permit, correct. Or it'll have to go through the whole subdivision process. Once we get the final application, we will send it to the county, then we will be going through this whole process. This itself will be preliminary as far as introducing it to the planning board.
Yeah, that's all you're doing tonight, is telling us what your project is. We can't take any action until you get a formal application into the town. Now, Steve Mountain, there's some things you need for the application?
Yeah, I think you have the list, or working on it.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, that's phase one of three. Our intention is to go on to phase two with another ten units duplexes, and then we're just purchasing the Riley property, which goes right up to Edgewood. So that'll give us... We're thinking of custom-built homes. I was talking to Flippe, and you know, I guess we'll see what the need is by the time we move over there, you know? It may be this year, it's next year, or the year after. Maybe the year after that, I'm not quite sure yet.
The first part of your project is senior housing?
Senior housing, fifty-five and older. Um, show them that, John.
Here's our site plan with proposed roads laid out. Twenty-five percent of the property is federal wetlands. We've had the wetlands delineated, and we're working on a wetland permit with the Army Corps of Engineers right now. We have to cross several of the wetlands to get the roads to Longconnect, and that requires a 404 permit. We finished the wetland delineation a couple of months ago, and the permit is in the works now with the Corps.
Is that where the patents are gonna come from?
Well, this pond is here.
Oh, it is, I'm a...
And it's surrounded by an almost a five-acre wetland. These other ponds are stormwater ponds. Required by state law to get a stormwater permit from our state. We have to collect the stormwater, detain it, treat it, and release it. So we're not allowed to do that in the wetland. So these are all land areas right now. We're gonna scoop them out, those ponds in there. This whole site drains down Route 33. There's a large drainage channel here along the road. Eventually, our ponds will all be connected with underground storm pipes and drain to the road.
And none of your houses will have sellers?
No. They're all gonna be slab-oned, David. This is kind of a flat site, and with a high groundwater table and everything there, it really doesn't lend itself to basements.
Well, this is one dance, but it's pretty wet.
Yeah. So our proposal also includes about three thousand millimeter-feet of waterline, and we would have granny sewers in here, and they would connect through adjacent property. I'm pretty sure Dave controls this at this point. Yeah. Okay, so the adjacent property to the east is over here, and it would connect up to the Meadowbrook subdivision. I designed that fifteen years ago. There's a lift station there, and our sewers would dump into the Sanitary Sewers there and run through their lift station to get into the city treatment. We're still going through all the approvals and everything with the town engineer and verifying all capacities. All electric utilities, cable and telephone would be underground here.
Yeah, we're working with all the utility companies now, like the grid. We got our work order, Spectrum, and the gas company. So everything's on their way, you know? Away the break, we're on as soon as we can. It would be nice.
This is quite a project. Steve, do you have some questions about what they're gonna still need?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing that we need in order for the planning board to review Seeker is exactly what this project and any future phases entail, which would be... The site plan work on-site is more than sufficient to bring to the planning board. What we need now is what's the concept on phase one, phase two? Where's the off-site sewer going? Any improvements as part of the project now or in the future have to be identified so that you can look at the project as a whole under the environmental review. So I think that's really the last part that needs to... That we need internally to then... And I think a formal application.
We have an application.
We have that, okay.
Once we receive that, we can send it to the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing about that, Steve, to touch on that. Where you see this one here, right across this area right here, that's the proposed allocate trail. There's a spot over there, we wanna put ten more duplexes, and that'll be called phase two. You know, it'll be done next year.
And just the concept of where are the roads gonna be?
Okay, I got you.
In a simple layout.
Yep.
In order for the planning board to review everything as a whole. They'll need all the current and future phases, and the off-site sewer, of course.
Yep, sounds good.
So we do the whole Seeker at once?
Yeah, Seeker is needed for everything. Yep. And it can change in the future, but we have to... Oh, sorry. It can change in the future. Whatever your best future phase plans are, identify them out.
Right.
Then everything gets Seekerized, and then if it changes later, then you just do a modification or a supplemental.
Can we handle just phase one all alone right now?
If... The answer is no. If there's any indication, I mean, you can scrap your future phases, and then so everybody knows that there's potentially no future phases, you have to address the off-site sewer and any other improvements, then they can review Seeker. Again, we've gotta look at traffic, we've gotta look at, you know... Water and sewer ultimately aren't gonna be an issue.
Yeah, it's not how many houses are going in there, is that what... Like phase three, I got no idea yet, you know, other than custom-built homes, when I was talking to Flippe.
Yeah. Well, you come up with a concept.
Okay, that's all you need.
Ten homes, fifteen homes, whatever it may be.
Okay.
In a, you know, a simple sketch plan, that allows the planning board to be able to look at the whole project as a whole.
Right, see everything.
Yeah.
And you can make it smaller if you want to later, but it's better to do it all with the big idea.
Yeah, right, right, okay. I'm gonna show you one more thing.
Yes.
This is the floor plan. Actually, that's the version of the house. Nobody does it on paper there.
Now, those are gonna be grates in the middle?
Yep, contained garage. So it'd be about...
Nice idea.
Close to fifteen hundred square feet between the living space and the garage. Each unit's gonna be three dollars a square feet.
I think it's bigger than the house.
So in phase one, there's forty duplex houses or eighty houses?
That's correct, yes, yeah.
Forty how? Homes, forty buildings?
Forty buildings, eighty, yeah.
Two units, two units, yeah.
Now, are these gonna be owned by the people, or are you gonna be leasing them out?
They're gonna be leased out.
Leased out, okay.
Could they rent it on, or it would just be leased out?
You know, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. It's a good question. I'm not sure.
The plan is for them to be rentals.
Yeah, the way we're doing the engineering right now, this is not a subdivision, it's a rental property. So we're not letting out any bigger lots. There are community waterlines and sewer lines and everything. The way it's envisioned now is a rental property.
One of the big things that happened was, and this project, which kinda slowed us down to begin with, you know, wood went up over three hundred something percent, construction lumber. So we ended up switching to cold-rolled steel, and that's what Frank Lazarus, he owns his own company, and rope makes his own two-by-fours, two-by-eights. Do you wanna touch on it?
Sure, Frank. We have new Frank Lazarus, Lazarus Industries. The construction themselves are all, as Dave mentioned, going to be fabricated in cold-rolled steel. We use this in the commercial environment, pre-regulated, and it's been used for just over fifteen years. Extensive use in the multifamily and commercial side of things. And one day that approached us, we had looked at building this project for him, and it allows us to really help him keep the cost of construction sort of consistent and stable for the fluctuations of the materials. So, you know, it does have all the engineering requirements for residential. John has gone through the build design, and it does really affect the comfort, if you will, of the home in any shape or form.
Any questions?
Question, please. For the roadways in there. I noticed that there was just one curb cut on Route 33. Emergency vehicle access.
There's two.
There's two, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Well, if the full build-out, it looks like it connects to the Meadowbrook, but I don't know.
Is that the one in Gary's with Meadowbrook?
Meadowbrook?
So those are some of the things that we need to see in that master plan. Okay. What's gonna be a public roadway versus private roadway? Public sewer versus private sewer? Those things.
So emergency vehicle access would be incorporated in your review on everything?
Yeah, we'll review everything, yeah.
Your plan was to connect to Edgewood?
Connect to Edgewood, yep. So then on phase three would be Edgewood, beyond Edgewood.
That's definitely gonna be... Gonna have to have little ways established, because right now, there's no... There's only one point of egress on Edgewood. That's problematic if there's a problem, so...
On Edgewood?
Mm-hmm.
As far as sanitation?
No, no, as far as...
Oh, the road. The road comes up from dead ends.
The emergency vehicle...
Extend down to the road, actually, wait.
Yeah, what you're looking at here, I think, that's Downey Road. Dan, Steve, back a year ago maybe, we were talking about possibly doing an extension from Downey Road, and then that one would merge in with this Edgewood extension, you know, so you got two new roads. But that's just the proposal, and...
Yeah, that's in our comprehensive plan, but I don't think we have the money right now to do it.
What if we did it?
If you have the money?
Yeah, if we do that, but...
Well, I'm sure the town will talk to you about it.
Okay.
The planning board doesn't make that decision.
Right.
But the town board could.
Okay.
I did the design work for Gary McQuethie on that whole Meadowbrook subdivision fifteen years ago. We did this, and it was always intended that somewhere down the road, he would purchase some additional property and connect that road up. I've got three of these with me, but pass them around. You can see where that Edgewood Drive, Dead Ends, and our intent would be to run the force main to Sanitary Sewers on this project over to the east and connect up to the sewers that are on Edgewood Drive.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion about that. We've had different plans come back and forth, but this is the first time that it looks like it's gonna happen.
Yeah, Gary was given the permission to expand to some of those, but the requirement was that he had to put that point of egress under thirty-three. That never happened.
Well, the numbers never worked. The costs we're putting in, the roads and utilities were so great at the time, it wasn't economical to do it, and that's why it never happened like that. Now, with this big development going here, and the need for secondary egress there for emergency vehicles, plus the fact that we've got a force main we might run across there, makes a lot of sense to connect this up.
Do you want those back?
I don't need a backup.
Oh, okay. Okay, any more questions? Well, this was a great presentation. Like I said, we've been hearing about it and talking about it. It's good to know exactly what you're going to do, and we'll take it step by step. We'll do the Seeker when the time comes, and we'll do the special use permit, whatever's necessary.
Okay.
So work with Steve and Dan, and they'll bring it back to us as you need approval from the planning board.
I just have one more thing I wanna show.
Go right ahead.
Everybody, just we had talked about this, and I don't know if it's still live or not, but right here, we were talking about a multi-use back when, you know? Talking about putting in MRI in.
You were talking about it?
Yes, you know, we brought it up to, you know, Steve and Dan. Then we talked about the store, but, you know, we wanted to leave this acre at 1.75 in the commercial if we can. Maybe put a store there, you know, gas, you know, gas station.
Is it commercial now?
It's not commercial, it's the egg.
No, egg raised, no. Yeah. Well, I guess we're...
Well, you could put a store in there with a special use permit, right?
We'd have to look. We'd have to look.
Yeah, they'll have to check it for you. If that's your plan, include that in the Seeker.
Yeah, if it's proposed, then, yeah, we do a review of that.
Okay.
Let me write on thirty-three, thirty-three.
Yep, right on thirty-three.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's about it.
Thank you for bringing this to us.
I'll just stop in for a second. I'm not sure if it says in there, but they're two-bedroom rentals, and they have kitchen, two-bathroom.
Yeah.
They're all two-bedrooms?
They're all two-bedrooms.
Nothing bigger?
No, no.
Market ring.
They're all identical, just cosmetically, they're gonna look different, you know, maybe different coverage, different siding on the outside, you know, different roof color.
That's a nice thing for seniors, it's all on the one floor.
Yeah, and my plan is to take, you know, down here, to take this existing ponds, and I already talked to the Army Corps about it, and make it this bigger. So this would be like a nature duck, like a duck even in there.
Just some walking trails around it?
Well, allocate trail, you know?
Oh, that's right.
We were talking about putting allocate trail down through here.
That's right.
Yeah.
And that's workable, Steve?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
I think I saw somebody say that. Was it Chad, or was it Tim?
It's a future, right? Yeah, I mean, ideally county to county, but county line to county line, but that is the path that it would go.
Where does it go up now, Steve? Up to Walma?
It ends at the industrial park on Pearl.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's about it, that's about it for us, right?
Okay.
So Dave, just to summarize, you know, you have like the commercial property up front, you have to hone in on exactly what it is you're gonna build, and once you know that, then that's when we can review everything.
Oh, gradually?
Yeah, and essentially, you gotta have a draft plat map. So if there's gonna be future public roads to Edgewood, we need to see that layout.
Okay, yeah.
And again, it doesn't have to be a ton of engineering, there's gotta be enough to know that it'll work.
Right.
But it's all gotta be laid out so that we can review everything.
Yeah, I'll get it for you.
You know, the flip side, if, I mean, going to sewer up to Edgewood, it may make sense to, you know, look at roadways. The other option, put in my last email, is the potential to run sewer down Pearl and connect to the city that way. Then it's just a standalone project right here, and you don't get into the bigger, you know, a lot more work and effort of figuring out how to get to Edgewood with a public road.
We tried crossing that bridge last year, remember? And nobody wanted sewer down there. We put a survey out, so, you know, kind of a negative response on that.
Yeah, there wasn't so much a negative response as not a lot of, a lot of, not a lot of interest.
Right.
There wasn't anybody against it, just not a lot of interest.
Nobody wants to pay for it, is the thing.
Yeah, yeah. But if you were, you know, pay what you would pay to go to Edgewood, then those people, if they're gonna pay a lot less than they would've, my guess is they would probably want it. And we can have those discussions if you want. Again, everything takes time, though.
Do you wanna set up a date for when we'll get back together?
Well, again, I think you just have to make some decisions on what the final product project's gonna be, and then we can meet whatever we need to do.
Very good. Any more questions, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to working with you, and when the time is right, you'll be on the agenda.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You did get a copy of the agenda, right?
Uh, thanks.
I sent it to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I will keep you on the list, and when it's time, we'll invite you back again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, Dan, zoning officer report?
Ah, yes, I don't have anything new to report that has gone to the county yet. Few things are in the work with Galena, which was approved a while ago, but for Building Two and Building Five, they've begun some earthwork over there. We're still working with Lampro. What they're looking to do, which has already been approved by the board, but we have a lot of in-house stuff that we're working on, then with Whack-a-Milk is looking at adding a few more tanks over there. So that is something, and they're putting up some temporary office trailers over there. I don't know the time limit, it looks like it's going to be a year to two years for office trailers over there while they're doing some other work on the plant itself. Other than that, I don't have anything new to report. Alta Beauty, Old Navy, everybody's moving along. Might be a week behind on Old Navy, but they're still looking to open sooner than later, so things are moving along with Chipotle as well.
Well, good. It doesn't sound like there's anything for a first meeting in September?
No, not as of yet, and if we don't have anything yet, I don't see there being anything else.
Yeah, just stand by, I'll let you all know, but right now, I don't have anything, and Dan doesn't. Unless something comes up, we won't have a first meeting.
I got a question for you, Dan. Anything more on the solar, cleaning up the weeds, pollinators, mowing?
No, I don't have anything. I've got letters that are drafted and that we're sending out. We've reached out to a few of them, we have received word back from a few, and they're working on West Main, and they're working on coordinating when to get it in the tree planting, since pull out all the dead ones. They also got a call from the owner of that, who's leasing that out, questioning if they do have to go back, because he would rather see not along the side and more up front, which I understand, but because it was approved by the planning board and because we've done it with everyone, we are sticking with exactly what was approved. So those are going back in. Any of the dead ones are coming out. The plannings for underneath, they're gonna have to get a little creative now that the panels are in, so where it didn't take, they're gonna have to go in there and get those done as well. So we're making progress on a few solar farms. The other solar farms, I have yet to receive any response back, so therefore, I'm sending an official letter out, letting them know about the trees, the plannings, the buffer areas.
One of the only things I bring out is we throw by it, buy one tonight, it's like, yeah, that's...
Yeah. And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of dead plantings out there that they need to take care of yet. Need weeds around the fence.
Yeah.
Gonna be an ongoing, continuous property maintenance thing that we're going to have to come up with a plan for and work with the developers and it's something new. I know we're drafting this new solar code. We're, we have Wendell, who is assisting and consulting with us now, so hopefully we'll get some more guidance in that draft. I know you're aware, Paul, you're on the, on the committee, so I, I'm hoping that's, that's something that we can get moving forward into some stronger verbiage for us to have that in the town.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna ask you where the solar committee is right now.
Um, we have our consultant and we're working through, we will be working through with our consultant on where we go with it. We have the ideas down on paper. We sent them what we would like. They sent us an estimate back. The town board has gotta work through that first and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, keep us informed when the meetings are because some of us may like to attend.
I will do.
Even not as a member, but just 'cause we're interested.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything for zoning? Okay, for my report, sad to say Jeremy Lyles resigned. And he, he had a couple, we had a couple of discussions and he just got too much to do right now and can't, can't do this. So there will be an opening, which one of the alternates will fill the opening. And we, we may have two, I'm not sure yet, so that'll, that'll come up later on this fall. We have to, the town board has to make the appointment. Just let you know, if you know anyone that's interested, they can send an application to Teresa. And that's all I have. I will let you know if there's gonna be a first meeting in September. Can you imagine? We're talking about September. So I'll let you know about that. And for sure, we'll have a second meeting, right, Dan?
Sure.
It looks that way. Okay. Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the Parker bids came in, so they're favorable and that'll be moving forward. It'll be, it, they'll either start this fall or they'll start in the spring. And that'll include the water main replacement.
Okay. That's it? Okay, Brooks?
Got a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, on favor?
Right, right.
Anyone oppose? Nope, thank you.